Paid him for it, so I. How'd you know?
He asked me if I see him much.
Oh.
I said, yeah, every other Monday night.
Um, if, if he brings a chance, just put it on my.
He thought he might have seen you this week.
No, I missed.
There's an invoice down there where a guy ran.
Thank you.
Crum pieces broke, straightened, straightened the doors, did all this stuff. Seventy-five dollars and twenty-three cents, and then paid fifteen dollars, paid fifteen dollars.
I'm kidding.
Was it seventy-nine?
That was nineteen, probably nineteen sixty-two or something. Oh, yeah. It is neat looking at the more ones.
Yeah.
Fifty-four, is that how many?
I think so, it's all about right.
Did you say you leave it plugged in?
At night, plugged in and on.
Can you leave it plugged in all the time?
I mean, but I mean, look at that, that's crazy.
And that doesn't affect you?
For what you're using it for.
Well, that right there is.
I might just do that then. Okay.
Yeah, keep it open and on, just walk away from it when you're done.
Do I owe you for a consultation?
Hey. Six o'clock.
We good?
Yep.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five Cascade City Council meeting. We'll have a call to order with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Oliphant, here.
Weber.
Here.
Hush.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Oliphant, second by Hush, all in favor?
Aye.
At this point, we'll have public comment, there's limited three minutes per person on agenda items of local government issues. Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. City council minutes, ten twenty-seven twenty-five, Cascade Park Board minutes, ten twenty twenty-five, Cascade Public Library minutes, eleven four twenty-five, and November tenth, twenty twenty-five claims. Is there any questions about the consent agenda?
Yes, on the claims, page seven, the premier window cleaning, I guess for the library, cleaning inside now, almost a thousand dollars. Anyway, I brought it up in March, where I said, library is opening, I thought perhaps it was due to sawdust or a lot of construction, whatever, but, I don't know how many hours they spend, but even at a hundred dollars an hour, or, you know, some, to me, that's a big crazy number, wash windows.
I saw that too.
That is a lot.
I didn't know how many windows that was, was that for all our buildings or just the library?
That's just the library, that was just the library.
This library has a lot of windows, does that go by hour? You know, how do they charge that?
I think it's by window, because we've had them do our house before, my parents gave it as a housewarming gift, and it was by window, and it was very expensive, like, shockingly so.
Yeah, so, are you considered a library, how many windows are in that building?
A lot.
Is that something that we could price out, though, because that seems like maybe we could find a better?
I mean, at fifty or seventy-five dollars now, an hour, I don't know what they charge, but, I mean, you're looking at, at a fifteen, sixteen, fifteen to twenty hours.
I know there's two of them that do it.
So according to the invoice, it says that it was for inside and outside, and it was a hard water stain removal that they charged a hundred and eighty-four, so it's eight hundred dollars plus the hard water stain removal of a hundred and eighty dollars, so it was inside and out.
That's from the sprinklers.
Oh, that's, yes.
Well, anyway, nice to.
I mean, it's, yeah, is it gonna cost that much every time we do it?
Eight hundred bucks every time? Is that the quote that they?
Because, I mean, if you're, if you're a business, like, say you got a front couple of windows, you know, it kind of makes sense, you're going by the window, but when you're, when you're doing an entire building.
In town doing other buildings too.
Yeah.
And those hard water stains, they're hard to get off because they're mineral?
That seems pretty steep.
That's only a hundred dollars, a hundred and eighty dollars extra, we're talking about what the price for the whole window is.
I mean, if they're thirty stories up, that'd be one thing, but, on the ground, I mean, windows and, it'd be nice to know if there's someone, alternatives or a bidding process or something.
I'll talk with them and see if there's an alternative.
Okay.
Gotcha. Any other questions about the consent agenda? If there's none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant.
Second.
Second by Weber, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, consideration to approve resolution number one oh three dash twenty-five, obligating and appropriating urban rule renewal tax revenue funds for the reimbursement of incremental property taxes and business incentives, which shall come due in the twenty twenty-seven fiscal year, and submitting all the indebtedness forms and annual renewal report. Anything on this?
Yeah, the last, um, the last item or the last agreement was B and L Reynolds. Deanna, I talked to you about the fact there's no water mitigation there at all, stormwater mitigation. Um, I brought it up at the meeting back in April, in February, when we, we, when the agreement went through that, and I asked again in another meeting, and I know twice I've asked you about whether anything is being done, and you decided you hadn't talked to them yet. In, in essence, he is in default of our agreement. Agreement. States, um, a default is a failure by a company to observe or perform any other material covenant on its part, to be observed or performed hereunder. All the water just goes right into the ditch, there's no containment whatsoever.
There's none on the, on the laundromat either.
Well, that doesn't matter, I'm talking about this agreement, there's, there's no agreement, we do not have an agreement with laundromat at the present time.
That whole area was done when we put our building out there, Bill, and those lots were included in that as well.
There's no, it goes right in the ditch, Mark.
Exactly.
That's, that's not, that's not containment, that's not containment.
Where can it go, where, where are you, where are you expected to go?
Have you been over to Monticello where the license went and maintained theirs, and where the?
What size is that?
Where the Quickstar retained theirs.
What's that, I mean, they're huge, huge lots.
Doesn't matter.
So you think every, every building that is built?
That's what our ordinance says, Mark.
Well, then, that's.
That's what our ordinance says.
I bet it doesn't.
Yeah, we will, before they have to vote on it.
Yep. Or do you want to untable it?
Well, we need to untable it to, to approve.
I need, I need a motion to untable, uh, number seven.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliphant, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Now we can discuss.
So I understand what you're saying, though, but, um, with this certification for this next fiscal year, he is not getting any money from the city, it's all going to.
Why, why hasn't anything been taken care of at this point?
When I have a chance, I will go talk to him, okay?
I know, I know, last time was at least four or five months ago, I talked to you, talked to you twice in your office, and, I mean, I can't believe he hasn't been in here for something to talk to him.
Um, I, I don't know, but, um, I will talk with him, I have a note and I will talk with him about it. But that really, like I said, this amount that we're certifying for his, his agreement, he will not receive any of that money. That money will all go, be put, kept in our TIF fund for the legal fees. So that's what it says, we need to charge for that seven thousand dollars, and that's all he, we're certifying.
So he's actually getting some pay, some form of payment already, if he's, if it's paying for TIF fees through, through this. His six thousand dollars is paying for the TIF fees that have been incurred, that's what you just said.
No, what I said was, I'm certifying for the first time fifty-four hundred dollars for him, but he is not getting any of it, that will all stay in the city.
But it's paying for fees that, that he has incurred through the city.
Well, we actually incurred those fees to, to have the development agreement put together.
It's, but there's still money paying off fees that he has, that the agreement has incurred.
Right.
Do we, when did we change ordinance? So every, every, every building?
In a development, in a development, and Oak Hill is, is considered a development, where.
Cascade Industrial Park's a development, that, that part of that development, that's not Oak Hill.
What's that?
That is Cascade Industrial Park.
I'm sorry, the Cascade Industrial Park's at three different times, they've had, um, they've had stormwater management plans updated in the past fifteen, twenty years.
And every one of those lots were part of it, correct?
That's correct.
So, it has, it's.
Geographically, as, as the engineering companies do this, they quarter off areas, and that, each area goes into a different water retention basins, et cetera.
Correct. So when you guys did that, why weren't those lots taken into consideration?
Because, because those lots.
Because you can't do it, because the ditch is right behind it.
Mark, every, every area out there needs to have water retention, that's what our ordinance says. A continued development, you start out with a development of twenty or thirty acres, which was about the first one, and then that was added on to and added on to again, but that particular lot does not have water retention, it's in our ordinance that it must have.
Okay, well, take a look at that.
Right now, it just goes in the, in the ditch, his water off his, his roof goes right out in the ditch.
Anything else to add? If nothing, I need a motion.
What would the motion for? Can we just table it?
No, we untable that.
It was, it was untabled.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Delaney.
I'll second it.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Number eight, discussion on speed limit in school zone near Cascade Elementary.
Okay, so when we, um, started discussing moving the crosswalk down to Harrison instead of that Tyler, then, um, we also looked at, I noticed how close the speed limit sign was, um, to Harrison Street, so then I started talking with MSA, and then we kind of started talking about maybe we need to put a school zone in, and, um, and just that school zone, we should drop the speed limit down to also help with the safety of the kids. So that's basically what this all covers, is the signage that we would need to do, um, but you guys have some decisions to make, do we want to do a school zone? And if so, do we want to have it fifteen or twenty miles an hour in that school zone? And then, um, if we go ahead with this, then, you know, I can work with MSA to make sure we have the appropriate signs and where they need to go, and all that, according to the, you know, specifications, so.
So where would we start a school zone then, Deanna? Sorry, I, my computer's gonna restart, sorry.
Okay, um, so, we would put it like.
We got a map up there for you.
Thank you.
There you go.
To start it, like, if you're going out and going in, we would start it at between Jackson and, um, Van Buren.
What's by those places, sorry?
Casey's.
So we have a sign going.
Casey's is further up, Casey's is on the other side, the east side of Jackson. So there's a couple houses before Casey's, Casey's west driveway would be Quincy Adams.
Okay. So that's where it's currently at, it's like right there.
No, it's relocated.
Oh, okay. Can we have two cross, like, can we keep the current crosswalk and then just add another?
Yeah, and, and they suggested, um, upgrading that crossing to just the S one dash one signs, um.
Which is the.
That one, yep, that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that one. But if we, I mean, if we would like to, we could always move the current ones that are at Tyler and move those down to Harrison.
To the other one?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what we want to do, we can always relocate those.
Those signs, that sign you just held up there, do they not, in a lot of the other, um, areas have like a yellow flashing sign that goes on, or bald, I swear I've seen those.
They, in some spots, they do, they're like a yellow, um, I think.
Blinking?
Solar operated.
And do they come on at like a certain time of the day when it's school crossing?
I think you could probably put a timer on them, yeah, I know there's an intersection in, um, in Dubuque, not far from where Sam's Club is, that, uh, there's also a funeral home real close to it, but that's how those are set up, they actually have a median in the center where they have the crosswalk, the kids will walk into the median, and then they could go across if traffic's not stopping, so it kind of gives them a safe zone. Um, we don't have that luxury, but I think those are, they do come on at a certain time, they don't have to push a button.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and they're like fifteen or twenty minutes a day, is what they would be.
Right, because it gives a little more like, hey, kind of thing on that sign if we put those signs there.
Yeah, and I know the, the crossing guards sign, the stop sign that they have now, um, they can act, they will actually push a button and they will flash stop as they're walking out, so it makes it much higher visible, even though they're wearing a yellow vest, that flasher's gonna catch people's attention, so. Yeah, I mean, we could do something like that, see what the cost would be and how we could set that up.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to look at, just a little more grab your attention stuff.
Is there crossing guards at both locations presently?
No, they moved it from Tyler to Harrison Street, um, they're actually using that as their main crossing now, both morning and night. There's three to four kids and a couple parents cross in the morning, they'll cross from the north side of the street to the school side. In the afternoon, they, there's anywhere from ten or twelve kids, and they just do them all at once. The kids gather on that side, all the pickup is on the west side, so the kids are on the east side that are actually walking, that's getting them away from that, that traffic up at Tyler Street, so they're just using that one, and they just do one crossing in the afternoon, they just make sure all the kids are there, so.
But the bulk of it is still on Tyler?
Um, for drop off of pickup is with cars, but every other kid's crossing, I mean, if, if they're coming up First Avenue on the south side of the street, Tyler, but they'll go cross the street, go right into the school, they don't have to cross First Avenue there, so, the majority of it is at Harrison Street. You might catch a stray parent taking a kid up there once in a while, but, there's a couple parents that will cross at Harrison, take their kid into the school, and then they'll cross at Tyler and go back to their house. So, in the morning, and usually in the afternoon, the parents stand on the north side of the road waiting for the kids to, to come back and cross. And I know there's even parents from, uh, the River Bend subdivision, they will, um, drive up, come up by the pool, and then they'll stand on the north side of First Avenue, and then there's two or three parents, usually their kids are crossing with the crossing guard, so. It's just kind of become the main cross, crosswalk area there, because it is, it's more highly visible, so.
For sure, have we gotten positive feedback from the school since they've moved it?
They like it, they haven't had an incident since we moved it.
Wonderful, good, that's great news.
I did, I did have to talk to the crossing guards about how they used the sign properly, and we talked about times from vehicles coming from Tyler Street down to Harrison Street, and, you know, if you add five miles an hour to each one of those cars, it's dropping off seconds, so, you're going from sometimes six seconds to maybe four seconds, you're stepping out in front of a car, you don't have time to stop.
Right.
So, try to make them more aware too.
Is the speed limit through there about right?
It's, it's pretty good, we, um, I noticed this afternoon when I went up there for traffic control for the, uh, when I sat in, um, the parking lot, there was a deputy that was in the parking lot, and then like where the, the teachers park, and he was there for quite a while today, so, but, uh, yeah, I mean, just, just highly, highly visible, I mean, people are actually, once in a while, I'll catch one coming down the hill, I'll flash the headlights at them, and they might be doing, like, like they're creeping up to thirty miles an hour. So I flash the headlights, they slow down, and I usually get away from them, so. But I do know, um, like Wisconsin, when I was over there, um, every crosswalk state mandated that it, it was every one during the time the kids were crossing, so like seven forty-five to eight fifteen in the morning, and then like two forty-five to three fifteen, it was mandatory, they were fifteen miles an hour. And, um, usually we didn't have any problems, but Iowa does not have that same law, so we can set our own speed.
Piazza has them up there by their elementary about yielding to pedestrians in crosswalks, I mean, I think, I don't, I can't even get a percentage, but how many people don't understand that rule, you know, I mean, you know?
There are a lot.
Yes, and I think we gotta educate our community a little bit, if it's even into Pioneer, or sending a flyer out in the car with all the schools and just explain to them what.
What that means.
What's that mean, because, you know?
If you look at the specific Iowa code.
It's a state law.
It, it's a state law, but it also states, if you're gonna step out into that crosswalk, the pedestrian has to assure that the vehicle is going to stop, they cannot just step out. So part of that responsibility is on them, I think if we put a sign up, it's kind of like giving a dog a bone, they just assume that they can go.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, even if we just send flyers out to the schools, and if the Pioneer puts a article on there about, you know, the proper way, what the crosswalks are for, and, you know, that, we have to yield to the pedestrians, you know, I mean, you know, you see it in the big cities all the time when you, in a crosswalk, that the cars yield to the pedestrians if it's, they're in the right of way.
Yeah.
You know, and crosswalks, like down here, if it says walk.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the cars need to yield to us, you know, I mean, I just think some people don't understand the rules.
The state laws.
And then, you know, not, you know, the older you get, the more you forget, you know, and, and people are in a hurry. I mean, I drove through town today, a day off, and it's hard to go twenty miles an hour.
Yes, it is.
It is hard, I mean, I, you know, not with no hurry.
Oh, yeah, yes, it is twenty.
It's twenty up through the school, you know?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I mean, that's just something to think about too, I mean, just to educate our people and community, and explain to them what the, you know, we got, I mean, I drove by the high school there last Thursday, going to, out of town, and that's a circus down there, people, kids trying to run across the street beating cars, and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a nightmare trying to, if you're sitting over there at school zone time, watching those cars come out.
Yeah.
Trying to beat the car that's on one thirty-six.
Yeah.
I do think since we're putting the main crosswalk at Harrison, that we should bump back the, like, speed limit further, just because it.
Move it further to the east.
Yeah, yeah, that for sure needs to be done.
Bring the speed down a little bit before they get there.
Right at Casey's.
Yeah, right at Casey's, I think that makes sense.
And, and we can try that at twenty-five miles an hour and see if it's actually working, and if we feel we need to slow it down, we can always go back and reduce it. So, for every five miles an hour, like in a one block period, if you're going from Tyler Street to Harrison, for every five miles an hour, you're losing a second or two, so, if somebody's doing twenty-five versus thirty, there's, you're going from six seconds down to four seconds, so. For that entire block.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to try it out at twenty-five, and if it's not working well, then lower it to twenty.
Great.
French flashers, red lights, the standard headlights.
Get their attention.
The, the deputy did snag somebody.
Did he, I was gonna say, he took off after a car while I was sitting up there today, and I was running, I was, had the guy on radar, and I'm like, why are you chasing this guy?
Yeah.
So, then he was on his cell phone. He was quite busy, yeah, he was quite busy for a while, so, yeah.
Everything talks about the school, though, should we maybe go, as suggested, perhaps with more of a crosswalk? I mean, in the summertime, you have a lot of pool traffic, you know, kids go in the pool, they'd be crossing there as well, you know, I mean, to make it more, a little more of a generic crosswalk, the actual crosswalk itself.
Could, I don't know how you'd set a time limit on that, though, that would be, because you've got kids going for lessons in the morning, and then, you know, going back for swimming in the afternoon, and swimming in the evening.
I'd much, I mean, I'd much rather just extend the present, um, speed limit out to the east.
Oh, okay.
And then, and then, and then, you know, have it all the way through at the same speed limit, rather than having school signs and, if they get off early on Tuesday at two o'clock or something like that versus three o'clock.
How far are you thinking, like, up by Casey's, like Quincy Adams Street there, or?
Or at the edge of the fire department lot, or?
Like Quincy Adams Street? That might.
Whatever the legal, I mean, whatever's legal and then a little more.
It has to be, it had, the speed limit sign has to be at least two hundred feet from a crosswalk.
Yeah.
That for sure, so.
Make it at least that, and wherever that comes out, it's between Casey's and Van Buren, or, or Jackson, I guess.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Um, when we make that, we should make, make sure we do a pretty big announcement, because we all know that everybody's gonna have a hard time changing to that right off the bat.
There's gonna be a little education process, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have to remind Mark a couple times.
But you see the twenty-five mile an hour sign as soon as you come by Casey's, so if it's backed up a little further, it isn't really gonna matter.
You do, and kind of depending, right now, it's, right now, it's a little easier because the leaves aren't on the tree. Um, I know a couple times this, this summer, I think the guys went up and trimmed the leaves back, and we've got people in town that know that's where it starts, but you've got somebody that's been through town a few times, it's like they're not really sure that there's a sign there when you go by until you're right on it.
I'd love to see it like right in the center of Casey's lot, like, right in the middle of it, because there's no trees or anything to obscure it, and it's gonna be pretty prominent.
And if they put the red placards on it, so it's really visible.
I think that one has it on it.
That.
Yeah.
Going from, from these.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
It's got at least one.
But I think even if the shade does, or if the tree doesn't obscure it, I think the shade from the tree probably does some.
A little bit.
It's not real.
But if we bump it down to like Casey's, there aren't any trees there to worry about.
Yeah, that's wide open.
Yeah. I guess, what's the other side, so, where would we put it on the other side, because it's?
Oh, that would be probably by Bailey O'Brien's office there.
Mm-hmm, like right in that corner there?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, do you have them on both sides of the road?
Yeah, you have to have one way, one way.
You'd have to put a thirty-five, extending the thirty-five out.
Because the thirty-fives are right there, oh, right, right past Wyatt Lehman's house.
So it'll be, oh, I see what you're saying, it'll be twenty-five on both sides, all the way out to Casey's?
The changes from twenty-five to thirty-five, vice versa, coming in from the left or from the east.
Because I'm already kind of speeding up because of where it's at now, and that's right at Harrison, so that's where that crosswalk is, we don't want people going up from twenty-five, right there.
So you're gonna set.
But if you get by Bailey's, then it should be thirty-five.
Yeah, Bailey's, like, it'd be thirty-five starting at Bailey's, going east.
Correct.
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna, you wanted to change that to twenty-five.
Oh, no.
No, it'd be changing, just moving the, we're changing from twenty-five.
Just extending the twenty-five.
Yep, got you, got you, yes.
So that should be about, uh.
But I thought you meant the other way downtown, where does it start at twenty-five down? So it stays at twenty-five coming all the way up through the whole distance, the whole way.
Really, it's about another block.
Yeah, it's not that much further.
Yeah.
Lock and hang.
Yeah.
But enough time to give Harris, that crosswalk at Harrison some space, safety.
Right, because that's what this has done, is really gave it from the corner, gave it a lot of space.
But there's not a lot of space he, from, coming from the east, if you're going west, there's not a ton of time to slow down there, because I feel like I slam on my brakes right there to slow down, to go down to twenty-five. No, because I'm usually running late.
Any motion allowed?
Do you need a motion or anything, Deanna?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
So what is the motion for, just to move the sign?
Yeah, just move the speed limit signs.
Move the speed limit sign, okay.
So make a motion to move the speed limit signs prior discussion, does that work?
Motion by Oliphant.
Second.
Second by Hush, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, Fred. Number nine, public hearing proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement, I need a motion to open public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
I'll second it.
Second by Oliphant, roll call. Second by Oliphant, roll call.
Uh, Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliphant?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
We are in public hearing. Any questions? None?
Nope.
No.
If none, I need a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Delaney.
Second.
Second by Hush, roll call.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliphant?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Number ten, consideration to approve resolution number one oh six dash twenty-five, resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into general obligation loan agreement. Need motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Gail.
Second.
Second by Delaney, roll call.
Oliphant?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Number eleven, consideration to approve resolution number one oh seven dash twenty-five, a resolution approving the health insurance renewal for January one, twenty twenty-six with well-marked Blue Cross Blue Shield with a one point tw- twenty-six percent increase. Is there any questions on this?
Not a terrible increase compared to what's been in the past.
We've had bad ones.
Larger increases.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Oliphant.
I'll second.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliphant?
Aye.
Number twelve, consideration to approve ordinance number zero four dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cascade, Iowa, by amending Title Six, Physical Environment, Chapter Five, Utilities, Billing Charges, Section Nine, Refuse Collection Rates, and this is the second reading. Is there any questions on this? If none, I need a motion.
How much was our spring fall cleanup, we didn't have that last time.
Well, we were just talking about that, and the fall cleanup was a lot more than a cleanup's ever been.
This is the spring one, actually, we haven't gotten the fall one yet.
I mean, spring, sorry, um, so I'm gonna make a phone call tomorrow to talk to Matt at Republic because they're charging us almost eighty dollars for an appliance and we're charging fifteen.
They charge what?
Almost eighty dollars.
Well, there, there has to be some.
Yeah, that, that can't be right, or otherwise if we, if we're gonna get charged that, then we're gonna have to charge that, like, that doesn't make sense. But it's never been that amount, it's usually between one and two thousand dollars for all the cleanups that we've ever had, so.
And we haven't gotten the bill for the fall cleanup that we just did yet, we only have the one from the spring, I can probably get them in a couple weeks.
Yeah, we need to look at that and before we approve it, they're reading, because.
If it's six thousand, that's all.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I don't know who put that bill together, but I don't think that's right.
That had to be a mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah, because even, even a full-size TV, which I would think would probably be one of the most expensive things to get rid of, would probably run you twenty-five dollars at the infill.
Right, probably.
Somewhere right in there.
Well, what's the scrap people getting for?
Well, I'm sure Tony will come down and take them all.
I got a guy at work that'll come down and take them all, take it off our hands, for just taking them.
Right, that's what I mean, if that's what they're gonna charge us.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, some negotiated talking that needs to get done with that, figure out what's going on there.
But the fall one before that was only two thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars.
Did they have the appliance one on that?
I don't have that, I don't have that invoice, but it's, but it's, but it's, that's what the cost was, I'd have to go get the breakdown.
And like the, and I have in the memo, the twenty-four fall was fifteen thirty-three, this fall of twenty-three was fourteen seventy-seven.
Which if you do that times the fifteen per appliance tag, adds up, it makes sense. So, but our recent, our recent bill we have to take a look at.
Need a motion?
I'd like a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
I'll second.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Hush?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Oliphant?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Number thirteen, discussion on the requests from Cascade Economic Development and allocated funds in fiscal year twenty-six.
Does it make sense to table this and have this closer to budget conversations?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yes.
That's everybody's thinking?
I, I think after the, I, I would say after the first of the year before we even.
I need a motion then to that effect?
I'll make a motion to table this discussion and talk for the first of the year.
Motion by Oliphant.
Second.
Second by Hush, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reports, Fred?
Just wanted to let everybody know, um, we had, on October thirty-first, I actually had Tyler start working, we started doing some training and, um, Fred rode with him one day last week, and we kind of let him out on his own Wednesday. So, I think he's doing pretty good, he's had a couple other questions, but, yeah, I mean, he was here before, it wasn't that hard of a transition to come back, so, I think he'll do good, I know he's made a, made a couple traffic stops, so.
He followed my husband home the other night, Fred went to, we got home from vacation late, really late, and so he went to check our shop, and he followed him from the shop all the way to our house, so it was, it's nice to see that somebody's paying attention, it's great, I appreciate it.
Fred probably would have offered to make him dinner.
I mean, not at one AM, but.
Maybe not one AM, but.
Back in the morning, I'll make you breakfast.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, I, I think things will work out, um, I've gotten some good reviews, not only from the county attorney from Jones County, but also had the assistant county attorney come over Wednesday and had a conversation with me about, um, how they appreciate, uh, if we could, I know we've still got some cases in, in, uh, Jones County going on, it's like if we could allow him to do that, it's like, yeah, it's not gonna be a problem, so. If it affects them, it's gonna affect us eventually, so, yeah, so I think it'll be good.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Deanna?
I have a few things, even though I didn't have a report, um, we are gonna start flushing hydrants on Wednesday through right before Thanksgiving, and there's a post going out so people know. And then we started hauling sludge, and then I just want to remind everybody that you're not supposed to be blowing leaves out into the streets, so.
And down at the yard waste site, some of the folks are putting, um, yard waste in the brush pile?
Of course they are.
Have we talked to Millers?
I emailed him, uh, last week or the week before.
Steve, why don't you stop that?
And I was told he was coming in the middle of November, so I said, can you give me a date, like, we're at the middle of November.
There's funkins and every, they're gonna have everything in that tree pile.
Yeah, if, if the guys are down there and there's yard waste in the tree pile, have them back drag it out and push it into the yard waste where it belongs. And then somebody else had dumped stuff, like it was a landfill, I think there's a TV, and they might want to throw that in the pickup and take it to Jones County.
Otherwise it's just gonna keep building, building.
Because it's, it's not gonna, they're not gonna chip that up with the, with the.
Do we put a camera down there again? And then we got the, do we have?
We've got those two special cameras.
Yeah.
I think we need to.
I think it has to happen, it's, it's.
It's been kind of a catch-all.
Yep.
Can we put a post out on the city Facebook page though about reminding, just reminding people about the leaves, not blowing them into the street, I mean, it's kind, it should be.
Yeah, we had talked about that earlier.
Okay, perfect.
Do we have, I can't remember, it's been so long since I've been down there, what, what do we got for signage down at the dump?
There's a, there's a big sign.
I, I thought I remembered there being one, I just wanted to make sure that there was.
It's pretty self-explanatory.
But, but you have this huge pile of trees right next to it now, and I mean, you can see it, but you don't notice it as much when there's nothing down there.
Right. All right, just making sure.
Even like a do's and don'ts of the, down there too, would be, I'm sure, helpful, hopefully.
And just a reminder that City Hall is closed tomorrow because it's a holiday.
Sounds good. If there's nothing else for the veteran of the community, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
Second.
Second by Weber, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.